Good evening and thank you for joining us for District Five's Town Hall sponsored by Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson, District Five Commissioner. This evening Commissioner Davis Johnson has enpaneled experts in DeKalb County who will help us to bring clarity to tonight's thoughts and tonight's topic, which is a candid conversation on police and community relations in DeKalb County. Tonight's Town Hall meeting will last for 90 minutes with a 30-minute public comment period for questions and for the public to ask your questions. If you're watching tonight, you can simply submit your question by calling one of the numbers, which I will give to you shortly, or you may also reach out to us on our social media pages as follows: Instagram, Marita D. Johnson, Facebook, Marita Davis Johnson, or Twitter, Marita D. Johnson. You may call the numbers 470-426-9651. Again, that's 470-426-9651. Or you may call 470-585-6485, and one of our staff members will take your question. You may also email your questions to districtfive@decalbcountyga.gov, or again, send us a direct message on one of our social media pages. At this time, it is my pleasure to bring forth Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson, who has envisioned tonight's panel discussion and candid conversation with the community. Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Demetrius, and I'd like to thank our panelists for being here this evening. It is my pleasure to invite the viewing public to this Town Hall discussion. Tonight, we will have an opportunity to hear from our distinguished individuals in DeKalb County, the state, and the nation, who I am confident will help us to take a more comprehensive look at the way we are building and developing police and community relations in DeKalb, as well as having a discussion of the community's perspective on policing in DeKalb. In just a moment, you will have an opportunity to hear from our panelists, who serve this community each day, and who have dedicated their time today to help us to ensure a successful And I would like to specifically thank our CEO, Mr. Michael Thurman, for allowing us to gather at this building this evening. We are living in very critical times, where many communities are suffering and hurting, not only because of policing or the like there are, but because of the lack of leadership at the very top of this nation. The current pandemic is impacting our communities, our mental health, and systematic racism, which has shown its ugly face in our nation. It is important that these type of discussions be held, not just in DeKalb, but throughout the state and throughout the nation. The militarization of police, armored tanks, comeback soldiers have no place in DeKalb County policing, chokeholds, shooting of black men and women just based on the color of their skin, no-knock warrants. This type of behavior have no place in DeKalb County. George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Amr Avery, Raymond Brooks, Rashad Brooks, just to name a few. We in DeKalb County are very proud in standing up for Black Lives Matter, and we appreciate our young people and our youth for what they are doing to bring awareness to racism in America. So in closing, I'd like to say that I have confidence in our police chief, and our Public Safety Director, and our sheriff, and also our District Attorney, to know that they will do the right thing for people of DeKalb, the people and citizens of DeKalb County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis Johnson. Again, I want to remind the public, if you're watching and you're just tuning in, you can submit your questions by calling 470-585-6485, or 470-426-9651. You may also email your questions to districtfive@decalbcountyga.gov. As Commissioner Davis Johnson mentioned, tonight's meeting would not be possible without the support of our CEO, CEO Michael Thurman. And so at this time, it is my pleasure to bring forth our CEO, Mr. Thurman, to bring greetings on behalf of DeKalb County, Georgia.
Thank you, Reverend. Good evening. First, on behalf of the 750,000 residents of DeKalb County and the CEO's office, I would like to acknowledge and offer my appreciation to Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson, our District Five Commissioner, for having the vision and just the determination to bring this august group of people together. This panel comes at a critical moment in the history of our county, state, and nation, literally the world, as we confront violence and death, as we engage in protests, as we begin to soul-search ourselves as individuals, as a county, a state, and a nation, about how we can improve the quality of our services, particularly public service, and how we can better protect and serve our citizens, how we can reduce violence and reduce unnecessary violence and death that has been perpetrated, particularly on African-American men. Commissioner Davis, I thank you for your advocacy, your fearlessness as a public servant, and your ability to not grow weary or tired, as you continue to advocate for the citizens of your district, but more than that, for our county and all across this nation. I want to humbly acknowledge and thank the people on this panel, who I serve with here in DeKalb County. Some are elected, some are appointed. We have amazing thought leaders. We have community leaders. We have distinguished attorneys on this panel, who proven to be outstanding leaders in their field and in their endeavors. They will be introduced to you later, but once again, I thank you for this opportunity. I'm honored to partner with Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson. I'm honored to stand with federal, state, and local leaders, and I look forward to a robust and enlightening discussion throughout the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. I will now move to the portion of our program where you'll have an opportunity to briefly meet our panelists, who are joining us and who are here in the live audience with us tonight. And so again, you have the information of how you can submit your questions. I'll give that to you later, but I'm certainly honored and proud. We've heard from our CEO, the CEO of DeKalb County, CEO Michael Thurman. And so, you know, I'm a pastor, and normally to my viewing audience, I say, "You can put your hands together there," but obviously, there's only a few of us here right now. So we're virtually putting our hands together for our CEO, Mr. Thurman. Also, we are proud to have with us our Congressman, who represents Georgia's 4th Congressional District, and he has served in Congress since 2007, Congressman Hank Johnson.
Thank you. I want to thank the leadership of DeKalb County, including my wife, the Honorable Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson, along with, of course, our DeKalb County CEO, Mr. Michael Thurman, for hosting this event today. I'm happy to be here, honored to be amongst all of the public servants who are here. And I'm proud to have served in the United States Congress for the last 13 years, but prior to that, I worked as a defense lawyer, criminal defense lawyer, in DeKalb County for 27 years, and for 12 of those years, I served as an Associate Magistrate Court Judge, working closely with members of the Police Department, as well as members of the District Attorney's Office, in terms of the work that I did. And so I have an extensive knowledge and appreciation of DeKalb County, the DeKalb County Police Department, the DeKalb County Sheriff's Department, the DeKalb County DA's Office. And so when I speak this evening, I'm speaking more generally. I'm not speaking simply about DeKalb County, because DeKalb County has overcome a lot of the issues that many other police departments in the nation have yet to address. So I want you to understand that my comments are being made generally. And so what I will say is that Rashad Brooks did not have to lie. I mean, he did not have to die. His life mattered. And what we have found throughout the years, going back to Michael Brown, which was six years ago in Ferguson, and even before that, just a string, an unbroken string of African-Americans and others, being killed by police officers using excessive force. And that excessive force has been used with impunity, and it has gotten to the point now where you can be filming people, you can be filming police officers, and they still do not have an appreciation for the fact that Black Lives Matter. So we saw the death, 8 minutes and 46 seconds of George Floyd's painful demise from this earth, as he called for his mother, all the while saying that he couldn't breathe, and we saw his life ebb away in a scene that I am sure is etched in the memories of our young people and our older people as well. And then, right after that, you would have thought that some sense of appreciation for the fact that we can't use excessive force would have occurred in the minds of law enforcement officers around the country, but yet, right here in Atlanta, Georgia, next county over, in the city, City of Atlanta Police Department, a police officer felt it was okay because a misdemeanor was running away after a scuffle with the police, and he shot him twice in the back, fired his weapon three times, the third bullet hit innocent bystander's car, a car with innocent bystanders. And then after that, the two police officers, one of them kicked Rashad, kicked him. He's dying on the pavement, kicked him, and the other one stepped on him, not once, but twice. And then, when the District Attorney had the gall to bring charges against the police officer, the police officers involved, he was then castigated for acting too quickly, even though he's got clear evidence, probable cause, in the form of video evidence. And so now, he is being laid low by even members of the United States Congress, who don't even live in the area, coming down here, talking about, "We need to change the District Attorney of Fulton County." And all of this is at the instance of the police union, the International Brotherhood of Police Officers, coming in to protect and coddle this officer while he is being subjected to accountability measures imposed on him by the District Attorney's Office. And so, you know, if we're going to have relief from this, we're going to have to have a change in the culture of policing. It's no longer a warrior mentality that we'll accept, people coming into the community, thinking that the community is an enemy combatant, and coming in to kick butt and take names, and not going to give any relief, when in fact Rashad Brooks needed a guardian. He didn't need a warrior coming down when he had been awakened. Perhaps he was intoxicated, but I couldn't tell. Seems like the officers gave him every field sobriety test known to man, took over 42 minutes to place him in handcuffs after he blew into an unreliable field breathalyzer test. And so you finally got evidence that you needed to lock him up, when in fact, the only thing you needed to do, you didn't catch the man out driving drunk. You caught a man sleeping in his car in a drive-through at a Wendy's. And so the only thing you had to do was let him call his friend to come pick him up, or let him walk over to his sister's house, but no, you wanted to get your statistics looking good. It was Friday night, you didn't want to go back to the station, having not arrested anybody for DUI, and so therefore, you arrest this young man. You had already run his record, you knew he was on probation, you knew he was on parole, whatever the case might be, and you're going to pile it on him. And so, we don't need that kind of warrior mentality policing us any further. We need guardians, we need people from the community who care about the people that they are protecting and serving. And so we need a change in the culture of policing. And so I'm glad to, and I'll tell you about it later, because I'm running out of time here, the George Floyd-
10 seconds, Congressman.
-Justice and Policing Act, which gets at this issue of police unaccountability, and a change in the culture of policing. It's a long road ahead that we must trod, but this is the first step forward, and I'll look forward to sharing some of the details with you as the meeting moves on.
Thank you so much, Congressman Johnson, who represents us in Georgia's 4th Congressional District. I'll now move over to our State President of the Georgia NAACP, Reverend James Major Woodall, who's with us tonight.
Thank you, and to the distinguished colleagues of mine from the amazing DeKalb County, I thank you for inviting me to come here. As we assemble today, I believe this sentence that I came up with earlier today really underscores for me where we are as a people, is that the cries of lynched bodies, of black lynched men and women, cry out in angst because of our willingness to compromise with white supremacy. And as I really tried to put into words what that meant for me, what we find is that there are those leaders who are willing, and sort of like the Congressman shared, I'm not necessarily just talking DeKalb, I'm talking all over this state, there are people literally willing to compromise in this moment, with institutions that continue to put our people on the ground with blood draining our streets. And for me, I look at it as a 26-year-old Georgian, and I said, "Well, why are we seemingly so willing to compromise with that which we know always ends up in black death? Do we simply say we got a long-term goal and a short-term goal, or we just simply suggest that there is something we must do right now to save our souls, to save our lives, to save our people?" And so I believe that it is incumbent upon us, and I'll go into depth a little bit later, to really reimagine what community looks like, not policing, because the people who are uprising all over this state are not asking for reforms to a system that's not working, they're asking for complete transformation. And so as leaders, it is incumbent upon us to be able to not only allow ourselves to reimagine what's possible, but to also listen to the voices of those who are crying out in the wilderness, lift up the voices of the people who are subjected to the veil, as W E B Du Bois calls it, and hear them. Because it's one thing to say that we are connected to people, and we lift up their stories, their names, their witness, but it's another thing to actually get them at the table, and not speak on their behalf, because they too have voices, they too, in the words of Eric Garner and George Floyd, they too have breath. And I believe, as a Baptist preacher, that it says, "Let everything that has breath praise the Lord," and then say, "Everything that has a leader," it said, "everything." And so in this conversation, our perspective is oftentimes challenged by our ability to be privileged. And so I always challenge myself, how can we lift up those voices that are often found in the margins, those voices that are silenced? And so as we talk about policing, as we talk about public safety, and as we talk about criminalization in the criminal legal system, how do we reimagine what's possible? And so I'll turn it back over now to you. I thank you for allowing me to be here, and I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And for those who were watching, also, I wanted to mention a point of fact, that President Woodall was elected to the position and office that he is in as the Georgia NAACP President at the age of 25, making him the youngest ever elected president at the state conference. So we continue to congratulate you on that, and we certainly look forward to hearing from you tonight. Now I'll move over to our District Attorney, District Attorney Sherry Boston, who is with us tonight. And Ms. Boston has, she is the District Attorney of the Stone Mountain Judicial Circuit, which oversees the prosecution of felony offenses filed in the Superior Court of DeKalb County. And Ms. Boston has served as our District Attorney since 2017. I'll now hand it over to you, Ms. Boston.
Thank you very much, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Davis Johnson for bringing us all together for this really important conversation for our community. As stated, I'm Sherry Boston, and I've had the honor and privilege of serving as District Attorney for this county since January of 2017. And let me start by saying that I want to tell everyone watching what the mission and the vision are of the District Attorney's Office. And this was created by us, written by us, when we came into office. And the mission of the Office of the District Attorney is to safeguard our community through vigorous and fair prosecution of felony offenses occurring within the Stone Mountain Circuit. We seek to accomplish this goal by preserving the dignity and best interests of our victims while using smart prosecution, strategies that balance offender accountability with prevention, intervention, and restorative justice. We believe in the power of engagement and building relationships with community partners for the betterment of DeKalb County. And our vision is we endeavor to restore faith in the criminal justice system and disrupt cycles of violence, trauma, and recidivism in our pursuit of public safety and justice. Our tagline has always been, "Engage, Protect, and Restore." Engage the community, protect the community, and restore faith in our community. And this isn't something that we created over the last 15 weeks of being in these challenging pandemic times. It's not something that we created over the last three weeks, as our country is finally having the conversations that it needed to have. This is a vision and a mission that I envisioned when I decided to run for this office, which is to make sure that we continue to do the hard work that exists, and we're not done. Even here in DeKalb County, led by all of these amazing leaders of color, we are not done with the work that we need to do to continue to engage, protect, and restore. And obviously, today, we're here to face police and community relations within our community, and each of us in this room has a role or a part in seeing that we do just that. And I can say that my role as District Attorney is to make sure that I continue to engage, protect, and restore, and also that I maintain an office that, by all accounts, the community can have faith that justice will be sought, no matter what the circumstances are. And that I also have an office that recognizes that systemic racism has been the backbone of our criminal justice system, and by acknowledging those facts and moving forward, we can do what we do best, which is protect our community, but at the same time, have the people in our community have faith in that. And I was inspired by former Attorney Generals Eric Holder and Loretta Lynch to make sure that when I took office, that I led in office, that we would have every person, not just lawyer, but every person in my office, go through implicit bias training. And we became the first District Attorney's Office in the state of Georgia to have eight hours of training for every employee that works there. And that training continues on, because every person that comes to work, brand-new in our office, gets that same training that everyone's been through. This is just one step, just one, towards making sure we build a system within our prosecution office that continues to recognize issues of bias, that by the way, we all have. And it doesn't make us bad people, but if we don't recognize what we have and the power that we have within the criminal justice system, then we will never be able to continue to restore that faith to the community. So thank you for allowing me to be a part of this conversation, and I look forward to continuing to work with these amazing partners and to address the concerns and needs of the DeKalb County community.
Thank you, Madam District Attorney. Again, if you're watching in the viewing public and you have a question which you would like to submit, you can do so by calling 470-585-6485, or you can call 470-426-9651. You may also email your question to districtfive@decalbcountyga.gov. You're tuning into a live Town Hall meeting, which is hosted by District Five Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson, a candid conversation about police and community relations. I will now go over to our Sheriff, who is the 50th Sheriff of DeKalb County, and has been serving since 2019, and has served in law enforcement for over 20 years, and we're so happy to have her with us, Sheriff Melody Maddox.
Thank you so much. And Commissioner, thank you so much for putting on this much-needed panel. This is great, and once again, I won't be long, but I'm looking forward to the work that I know that we are going to do together. We have already started, so I can just imagine what we're going to do going forward. But let me just say this, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said it best, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about the things that matter." We are no longer being silent, and I want the communities to know, I want the citizens of DeKalb County to know, that on December 1st of 2019, when I was sworn in as the 50th Sheriff of DeKalb County, I came in with an acronym, and the acronym is E-A-R, meaning that I hear you, excellence, accountability, and respect. It means that if you walk in excellence, it doesn't mean that you're perfect, but I expect you to be great, and that we're going to hold you accountable for the decisions that you make and for the positions that you hold. But you're going to respect yourself, your coworkers, and the community, as well as those inmates. So again, I thank you so much. I hear you, we have the ears to hear, and we're going to make sure that we continue to work with everybody that is in here on these panels, and I look forward to the continued work together. So thank you so much again for bringing this together.
Thank you so much, Sheriff. Now it is my pleasure to introduce our Director of Public Safety, Director Lumpkin, who was appointed to his position of Public Safety Director in January of 2018. He is responsible in the departments that follow under his purview are the Police, Fire, Animal Control, Emergency Management, E-911, and the Medical Examiner. It is my pleasure to bring to you now Director Lumpkin, who has extensive knowledge and background in law enforcement.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the privilege and honor to speak today with these outstanding panelists. This subject matter is critical to us, is critical to us as individuals, is critical to our families, is critical to this county, is critical to the state and this nation. For too long, we have had short-term memories when incidents have occurred that we knew should never have occurred. For too long, people like me have had to hear the stories that I had to hear in the late 1950s, and then I had to repeat to my son in the early 80s, and my grandson in the 2005 or '06, and with younger grandsons that I'm going to have to repeat again, that how you interface with America as a black man, how you interface with America as a black female. Before my father, he had had to hear that stuff. We can stop this, we can stop it, but it takes all of us, it takes the black Americans, the African-Americans showing what's occurring. You would have thought we learned a lot in Rodney King, when we went through that in 92. We would have thought we'd learned a lot about the video and what actually occurs. What we learned was jury nullification, which has occurred throughout the history. I'm prayerful that this is a sea change, that what's occurred, the lives that have been lost are not in vain. The police and public safety and everyone around this panel, we are subsets of American culture. The police are empowered to take lives under certain situations that ought to be so narrow, it shouldn't be nebulous, as, and I know we've got a few attorneys here, but I think Graham versus Connor is nebulous. It doesn't, you don't teach it well to people unless they have a higher, higher education. When people don't understand, they do things wrong. We have to do a better job in America and DeKalb, and I'm speaking overall, and I'm speaking as "we," or I hope I haven't done these things. But DeKalb is far advanced than the, some of the other police departments that I've had the opportunity to serve in. What's key to us now and in the future is recruiting the caliber of individual that we want to police, to engage, to serve our citizens. And that standard is, how do we want to be people to engage us? That standard is, how do you want them to engage your son, or your daughter, or your mother, or your father, your brother? Recruit the right people, screen them robustly, psychologically, looking for the implicit bias, looking, we all have them, looking for the races that cannot be allowed to integrate and engage into our departments, and then train them properly. Train them, but training, most individuals said they need more training. But if their life depended upon it, they could have accomplished the task. That's not training, that's a will to do right, and that's a lack of supervision. We have to select them, screen them, train them, supervise them, and we also must manage and lead them. They must know what we, as individuals and collectively as a system, what we stand for, but also what we will not stand for. Defunding police, in my opinion, is not an option. Refocusing, restructuring, reimagining, et cetera, are great options, that we have to do things differently. We had this conversation at IACP probably eight, seven, eight years ago, when I was saying that American policing is killing around 1,000 individuals a year. The consensus were we were shooting around 400, 500. I said, "No, you're not counting. You're not keeping up with this." We in the communities know, and we know all of those aren't justified, and if we as leaders will not say when something is not correct, then what do you expect the people to do? Thank you again, Commissioner, for inviting us.
Thank you so much, Director. At this time, we're going to now meet the police chief, the new police chief, I still think we can call it new police chief, of DeKalb County Chief Martha Ramos, who is a 22-year veteran in law enforcement, and she has been with us since November of 2019, and we're so happy to have her with us. She is the first female police chief in DeKalb County, and we're so happy to hear from you now.
Thank you. And I want to thank Commissioner Davis Johnson for allowing me this opportunity to address and dispel any concerns as it relates to the police department. I also want to thank CEO Thurman for the opportunity to lead this department, so I'm very thankful for that. What I'd like to say is that the DeKalb County Police Department, no matter how cliche, is here to protect and serve, and we want to do that in a way that keeps the community and the officers safe. We need to come together, this is not a time to become divided. I think together, we can accomplish anything. And so, I'm hoping to work along with the community to find a way to make sure that everyone feels like we're doing the right thing, that everybody feels safe and secure in DeKalb County. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief. And then, we're also going to hear from Attorney Mawali Davis, who is a, the co-founder of the Davis Bozeman Law Firm and also practices civil rights law.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, CEO, thank you. I start with a quote from a young man. He said, "I'm not going to die tonight." I think that was a very odd statement for a young man who is a rising senior at Morehouse, who is a business major, who wants to become a fashion icon, who had never been arrested before, never had a police interaction before, who was with his girlfriend from Spelman, and whose car was attacked by Atlanta police the day after the uprisings began in Atlanta. And I want, again, for us to focus on the fact that he said, "I'm not going to die tonight," because I think what's important here is there is a shift, whether we all agree or not, there's a shift in the resolve of our young people. They're done dying. And so, we can frame it a lot of different ways, but this, the way policing is done in America will change. It must change. And people wonder, they say, "Well, here are people who are out protesting police brutality, and then they end up brutalized." How does that happen? Wouldn't the police naturally be, have a heightened sense of, "We should handle these people in a different way?" It's so baked into the culture of policing that black lives don't matter, that it doesn't matter whether it's a white officer or a black officer, that is how policing of black bodies happen. It happens much more aggressively. There are 1,000 people being killed every year by police, and black people are three times more likely to be the ones that are killed, and 50% of those that are killed usually have disabilities. So, that's going to change. And so, the question is, how far out will we go to get this moving so that it changes as quickly as possible? There is no situation, no police department that does not have as a part of its culture white supremacist behavior, not white supremacist individuals, it's a part of American culture. And so, until we engage in anti-racist training for all, going a deeper dive than the bias training, but anti-racist training, until we address it with white officers looking at white fragility, with black officers looking at post-traumatic slave syndrome, these are issues that are a part of our psyche and our conscience in this country, in this state, in this county, and in the surrounding cities. And so, that's, that's the work. James Baldwin, I think, said it best when he said that not everything that is faced can be changed, but nothing can be changed until it's faced. So, we got to face the fact that as a part of American culture, white supremacy still reigns supreme, and until that is delved into in a deep, meaningful way, though, the next police killing is right around the corner, right around the corner, because it's a part of the culture. And that's the work that I hope we are all prepared to engage in, and it should be very uncomfortable for us. This is not 2016, 17, 18. These young people are going to remain in the street until this situation changes at its root. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Davis. And now, I will call on our CEO just to bring this opening discussion to a close.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for your honesty and your integrity in how you carry out the duties that you have, but more importantly, thank you for your courageousness, your vision, and your determination. I promise you, people in positions of authority and leadership are listening to you and to the people you represent. I want to encourage the audience that's watching, please, if you have questions or comments, and I'm speaking on behalf of Commissioner Johnson, that's what this moment is for. I can tell you one thing about DeKalb County, about Commissioner Johnson, about myself, we're not sensitive. The truth sets you free. DeKalb County is not perfect. We're better, we believe, than others, but we're not perfect. We are evolving, and we're getting better, and we have people in positions through election and through appointment. We have people through association, Reverend Woodall and the Counselor Davis, who are coming together to solve the problems. But you can't really solve the problems unless you humble yourself and realize that I don't have all the solutions. I have ideas, but I don't have all the solutions. So, let's open up the floor, let's be powerful and brave enough to listen, and more importantly, let's learn so that we can build a better county, which will become a model and an example for other counties and cities and jurisdictions all over this country. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. CEO. Again, if you're watching us tonight, you have an opportunity to present your question to the panelists here who are live with us, and so, you can do so, again, by calling 470-585-6485, or 470-426-9651. You can also email your question to districtfive@dekalbcountyga.gov. And so, tonight, again, I'm Demetrius McCoy, the Chief of Staff for Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson, and tonight, my role is to serve as the moderator and to present a thoughtful, present thoughtful questions that we have received and ideas to be discussed tonight by our panelists. Our goal tonight is to present a candid conversation about police and community relations in DeKalb, this state, and this nation. We've heard their names, we have seen the protests, we have seen the stories, we have seen and felt the impact of the current climate here in America, in the state of Georgia, and across this county. And so, many of the things that we've seen around just what is happening is really happening in our communities. It's happening right here and impacting our communities. And you know, it really became really real to me when I looked at my one-year-old son, and I asked myself the question, "What type of America is he going to grow up in? What type of state will he grow up in, and what type of county will he grow up in?" And so, given the current climate and relations of what we are experiencing, what we have seen, which is not just happening overnight, it has happened over time, and now we are at a place where it has reached a head. And so, I'd like to know from Congressman Hank Johnson, how do you see the current climate of what is happening and the issues that we are discussing tonight? How do you see this on the federal level?
Well, thank you for that question. I see on the federal level a quick response to the death of George Floyd on, I think it was June 1st, Memorial Day, Monday, and here we are, June 22nd, having marked up the George Floyd Justice in Policing Act last week in the Judiciary Committee. Marking up means taking a piece of legislation, amendments coming in, voting up and down on those amendments, and then finishing up with a final product, which is then sent to the House of Representatives for a full-floor vote, which will happen on Thursday on the George Floyd Justice in Policing Act. That act is a compilation of pieces of legislation that have been proposed by members of the CBC, Congressional Black Caucus, and others, and that legislation is a compilation, it's a great start. What it does is creates a paradigm shift from police using excessive force with impunity, and it gets at society's need to be able to hold police accountable, and it does so It creates a situation where the criminal standard for prosecution in police misconduct cases has been adjusted to make it easier for convictions to come from federal courts after federal prosecutors charge police officers with violating civil rights of individuals that results in death or bodily injury. And these convictions have been tough to obtain by federal prosecutors because of the standard that has been applied in those cases. It's been a willful standard. You have to show willfulness on the part of the police officer, but the law is being changed so as to mandate that if you can show recklessness and knowingly depriving someone of a civil right, they can be convicted. And so, it reduces that burden that prosecutors have had, which has resulted in few successful prosecutions. Also, the elimination of qualified immunity, which has kept civil litigants from being able to hold police officers and police departments accountable. The judicial branch, the Supreme Court, has jumped through many hoops to create so many obstacles so as to make it almost unachievable that justice can be had in a civil case against a police officer or police department. So, the George Floyd Justice in Policing Act changes the law to eliminate qualified immunity, and it also mandates reporting and compilation of data on police encounters. That's very important because you want to be able to get at police stops based on racial characteristics, racism in police stops, all the way through what may result in an arrest. All of that data needs to be compiled so that you can take a look at it, and you can make some determinations about what's actually been, happening in these police departments. And so, compilation and reporting of data, including deaths and injuries and use of force, things like banning chokeholds, ending religious and racial profiling, and also establishing a national police misconduct registry so that information about officers is not hidden from public view, and officers are not able to leave one department with a pending complaint for using excessive force, which is then dismissed. Then they go to another department, get hired, and the same thing happens there, and they go from one department to the other, continuing to be a sworn law enforcement officer. And they go from one department to the other, continuing to be a sworn law enforcement officer, but with a trail of misconduct allegations that never get resolved. And last but not least, demilitarizing the police insofar as shutting down the 1033 National Defense Authorization Act surplus military weapons program, which has resulted in a flood of military equipment, military-grade weaponry onto the streets of America in the hands of police departments that don't need them, don't, have not been authorized by the civilian authority for that law enforcement agency to have that equipment, and there being a requirement in the law that when that department receives the equipment, they got to place it into use within 12 months of receiving it, which has resulted in the inappropriate use of this militarized equipment on the streets by untrained law enforcement personnel. And also, we're going to start reprogramming some of the existing funding so that we invest it in transformative, community-based policing programs. And with that, as we say, Congressman, I'll yield back.
Thank you so much, Congressman. And if the viewing public would like information about the Justice and Policing, the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act of 2020, it's on your website, Congressman, at hankjohnson.house.gov, where you can go and find out more information about that. I do want to, we're going to move right into the questions from the public, but I do, very quickly, just, Mr. President, if you can give us just about a minute or so about where you see these issues. And I ask particularly your outlook on this because we have noticed, as Attorney Davis mentioned, that a large group that has really stood the challenge of this current circumstance and who we've seen really out of a lot of younger millennials who were saying, hey, you know, enough is enough, we don't want our children to grow up in this type of world. So I'd really like to hear from you about the current state of what's happening.
Most definitely, and thank you for that. So, one, there's two generations that have come after me. I'm a millennial, but they got Generation Y, NZ, who have a totally different outlook, and they are more urgent than we are. But I think it goes back to what Brother Davis shared is, at the heart of our question is not police, because this entire paradigm has always been about black versus blue, and that's not the case at all. What we're seeing, what we're saying is that at the heart and the soul of this moment is a desire to rid ourselves of white supremacy. But the question must be asked, what white supremacy is? Because most people don't really understand. They just think it's black versus white. No, it's about identifying who's human and who's not, who's citizen and who's not. And so as we look throughout the corridors of history, and we see that every single moment in American history, there's always been black bodies that literally call for a shifting in what we know to be possible. chattel slavery, the Civil War, World War I and II, woman suffrage, mass incarceration, the Black Codes, Jim Crow, Black Lives Matter, the Civil Rights Movement, HIV and AIDS, even COVID-19. Every single element of our history as a country has not been isolated to this conversation. It's always been about dehumanization. How can I make the black body non-human? We had it in our Constitution that we were three-fifths of a human being. Three-fifths of a human being. And so our work is not simply to just simply, or to reform a police culture. It's literally about reassessing how we view our bodies. It's even embedded in our theology, that we suggest that somehow we were created in some flawed sense. And I reject that wholeheartedly, because I believe that God had created us and saw what thy God had created and called it good, not destructive. And so as I close, I just challenge us to reimagine, and I keep using that word because it's going to take that kind of power to reimagine what's possible, and not just for policing, but for life. And with that, I'll yield as well.
Thank you, sir. I want to go over to our Police Chief and Public Safety Director for our first question, which is an anonymous question. But the question is, will DeKalb Police get rid of no-knock warrants? And the second part to that is, will the police abandon the chokehold policy if there is one?
We do not currently have a chokehold policy. What we do, I'm sorry, we have a policy that bans it. So we don't currently use, nor do we intend to use, any chokeholds. So that's already in place. Also, as far as the no-knock warrants, we do have policy that allows the no-knock warrant. But I want the community to know that even though we have the policy, out of 456 warrants that were served last year, only two were no-knock warrants, which is 0.44%. So even though the policy is in place, we really don't utilize it or take advantage of it. We've only used it in two instances where it was crucial. And even at that point, I was told that there was still an announcement, even though we had a no-knock warrant. So we definitely do not take advantage of the no-knock warrants, and we will only utilize it when it's absolutely necessary. We don't believe that property is going to take the place of life. So life is going to be the value. This is what we're valuing in the DeKalb County Police Department.
Thank you so much, Chief. Director, you want to weigh in on that?
We also prohibit the knee restraint on the neck, the anything of that nature around the spine. Chiefs said the only two of the 456 warrants that were served were no-knock issued by a judicial officer. The process of issuing and the process that led to the horrible death there in Kentucky was a no-knock warrant in the middle of the night. Now, what kind of sentence does that make? Process means a lot in what's allowed and what's not. Going into a person's home, plainclothes, in the middle of the night with a no-knock is a recipe for disaster. We don't, we want to be thoughtful, reasonable, and prudent in all of our behaviors.
Thank you so much, Director. Our next question is going to go, really, it's going to be open, but I will direct a portion of it to our Sheriff. And so the question is from Ms. Rita Scott, and her question is, what department serves as an advocate between law enforcement, the Judicial Department, and the communities and families to support those that are incarcerated in DeKalb County and have health concerns? The second part to her question are, is, are those who are incarcerated in DeKalb County Jail being given masks? And if so, how often are the masks changed?
First of all, let me just say, thank you, Ms. Rita Scott, for that question. But to let you know, I am an advocate for those individuals that are incarcerated, and that we have several people that you can reach out to in the DeKalb County Sheriff's Office in reference to information or concerns of your loved one there. And as far as masks are concerned, we have an abundance of masks. We've been donated, just the other day, Pastor Jamal Bryant donated 10,000 masks to the sheriff's office. So there is no reason for no one to not have a clean mask. And they can actually ask for one whenever they feel like it, and what we do is swap out one. They give us one, and we give them another mask. So all they have to do is ask for a mask. Of course, you have 1,300 inmates, so we are not able to walk around to ask every inmate. But they can ask for a mask, and we have them there. We make sure that all supervisors have access to those masks to give to the inmates. So they do have the opportunity to get the mask, and whether it be every two days, every three days, it's up to the individual inmate.
Thank you so much. Madam District Attorney, if you'd like to weigh in a little bit, you talked about it, but some of the ways that your offices interfaces with communities and to support some of the families who come through your office as well.
Well, in a multitude of ways, but first, let me just say that our twofold we have for victims in our office, we have expanded our victim witness service program since I took over office. We had nine victim advocates when I came on board. We now have 21. And those advocates serve not only cases that are filed within the criminal justice system, but even those victims that present themselves to us, but for whatever reason, choose not to prosecute those cases in the system. We recognize that there are folks in need of services. In addition, we also created our Crime Strategies and Community Partnerships Unit. And the part of the community partnership is, their goal is to go out into the community, not just wait for victims to contact them, but to go out into the community, to engage with our faith leaders, our civic leaders, our HOA organizations, our community residents, both that are vocal and some that are not. We also have, we also have precinct hours where we put ourselves at the law enforcement as well, because we want to also be a bridge between those individual precincts as well as the community. And we want them to see us in the precincts, in the DA's office, as well as out in the community where we're hosting events. So we continue to find ways to engage with our community outside of just the criminal justice system, but we offer services to those that have the unfortunate circumstance to find themselves in the criminal justice system as well.
Thank you so much. Before we move on, if anyone wanted to come back and talk about some of the ways that you are impacting the community, whether it's Police Department, whether it's through your work that you're doing with what's happening, I'd just like to open up the floor for just about 30 seconds for you all to talk about. I want to particularly talk about some of the ways our Police Department is doing that. I know we have some community roll calls and some things that, if you want to briefly talk about how we're engaging with the community as well.
Things have kind of slowed down a little bit with COVID, but we start, still are having our community roll calls. We're definitely in touch with the HOAs. We want to make sure the community knows that we're aware and we're engaged. We met with the Department of Juvenile Justice. We've met with the probation and parole. We've even met with the library. We've met with the superintendent of schools. We're definitely trying to get invested out there into the community. Let them know that while we're here to protect, we're really trying to place an emphasis on service. So we are trying to get engaged. We're trying to build bridges and relationships, and most of them have been very agreeable to working together, and we've already started bridging that gap.
Thank you so much. Anyone else want to weigh in on community?
Well, we, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry. I will say, we have our Community Relations Manager, Ms. Lisa Wally, that keeps us engaged in the community, and everybody knows her email address as well as a phone number. And we try to make sure we, again, like you said, bridge that gap, because that's what it's going to take, is, first of all, for all of us to come together as one. And as we come together, we're able to bridge the gap that's in the community. And we have several events. I mean, with the COVID-19, we understand that it's hard for everybody to get together. A lot of young kids that missed their proms and their graduations were not able to celebrate. So they sometimes will call and just ask for a little bit of celebration, which means asking for the patrol cards or just to put on the blue lights and siren to come out and just say how much they are appreciated. And if, it only takes a hot minute. If that's what it takes for us to bridge that gap with the community, we're going to continue to do it. And we've also worked with the DeKalb County Police Department to make sure that...
Sheriff, you make a wonderful point there. This past week, my church hosted a food giveaway, and we had a DeKalb County Police Officer just to be there with lights on, just to, you know, let the community see that we were working together. And I was sort of surprised to see that the community, even in the current climate and relation of what's going on, the community really appreciated and wanted to take pictures with the officer and was very appreciative. So you make a very valid point there, that sometimes just visibility of seeing the right thing happen can also impact what's happening now. I want to go, you had something you wanted to weigh in on?
Just briefly, we have, the engagement that I think certain community members have had to engage in has been in way of protest. I just lift up the names of Kevin Davis, who, at the time of his death at the hands of the DeKalb Police, he, at that time, DeKalb was still investigating their own police shootings. And I think it was through community engagement and protest that that changed to now investigations being done by the GBI. But prior to that, even in that case, that was an internal review as Cobb County did as well as APD. Now we've seen a shift across the, across the entire state. And I think Kevin Davis's name, that he did not, in fact, die in vain, that his, the organizing around that helped lead to, across the state of Georgia, GBI being called in when there is a fatality. I also lift up Troy Robinson, Anthony Hill, and Adricus Davis, just some of those who have lost their lives here in DeKalb County during law enforcement engagement. Because I think one of the things that has troubled me most about the protests is that we look out at George Floyd in Minnesota, but we don't focus in on what are the injustices and issues and names that we should know and call and lift up. And I think we have a responsibility to do that, because any loss of life is sacred. And because it wasn't caught on camera, or it was a few years before Black Lives Matter really blossomed into the movement that it is, that those lives also should just be lifted up as well.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, Congressman.
If I might add something. Yeah, the whole issue of police departments investigating the incidents that involve their own officers who have used force, which may be contended to be excessive. The fact that the law enforcement agencies have been investigating themselves is something that, that I decided to take some action by introducing the Grand Jury Reform Act back in 2014 as a result of the Michael Brown case in Ferguson, where you had a police department investigating itself. That's inherently, doesn't build confidence, and it's inherently, that's not a good situation. We need to avoid that. And so I appreciate the work that, that was done on the outside to make sure that provisions of the Grand Jury Reform Act, which included mandating that these investigations be conducted by the state's highest law enforcement agency. I'm glad that Georgia took the lead in doing that, and now other states are going towards that. But I still have federal legislation that would mandate it, and I'm going to continue to press forward with that kind of legislation to, because again, you've got to have accountability. And if you don't get the kind of investigation that you need, you won't get the kind of prosecution that would flow from it. And, and so we're working on that legislation. As we speak, it's a long road ahead, but much work can be done, but we're off to a good start.
And we, thank you so much, Congressman. We have tons of questions. I know you have a statement you want to get in, Mr. President, but let's, let's move into the questions, and then we'll sort of just hold that there. Do want to let the viewing public know, we've got a question dealing with pending, pending investigations and litigation. And so I want to make the public aware that we cannot comment on that. And so if those, if there are questions that come in regarding things that are pending, we cannot comment on that. And so I do also want to mention that we all are familiar with the words, "we shall overcome someday." And the Good Book tells us that we overcome by the testimony. And so it is very important, as you said, Attorney Davis, that we do tell these stories, that we do speak the names, that we are not afraid to recognize and to speak truth of power about what is happening in this world today. And so we definitely encourage our young people, and I hope that they're tuning in tonight, so that they can see this and know that they have people who are here at the table who care, and who are not just those who are cares or in the word that I preach, that not just hearers, but they're doers of what, of what we say. And so we're going to go to the next question, which comes from Professor Lawrence Bryant. And he asked, he asked a question. He wants to know, what role can the community play to be a part of the solution of what is currently happening in America concerning police and community relations? What role can the community play? We obviously know, and we've seen protests, we've seen different ways, and there are many things that we can do. So I'd like to hear from some of you all about what are some of the ways that you would encourage the public to, to get involved in what's happening?
If I may, I'd like to say that the community needs to be involved. They need to be engaged. And when they have those meetings, they need to bring those people of concern to the table. So if you have an issue, you have some recommendations, you want to bring law enforcement, we want to hear the good and the bad. We need to know what's working as well as what's not working, and so we're open. So I ask for the community to be involved. Don't be embarrassed to pick up the phone, invite us to your meetings if you want to have a meeting with us. Just call us. We need to be working together. Once again, if we work together, I think we can accomplish just about anything.
And if I could follow up to that, I think, or I believe, rather, that we need, when we talk about this re-imagination, one of the models that have been lifted up here is self-governance. And currently, right now, we have a system that we believe that we're self-governant, but many people would not conclude that. And so we need to be able to evaluate. I think, one, is the community is where the... I think, one, is the community is where the road stops and starts. It doesn't start in the Police Department, doesn't start in the jail, it starts at home. And so how does the resources that we have as government officials, well, I'm not a government official, but as government officials, where are the allocation of those resources? Are we investing more in the detention of our people or in the livelihood of our people? Would we look at, you know, having access to information? Is it accessible through multilingual resource? When we talk about community needs, are we lifting up those needs in their voices to be able to provide for what they need? Public safety approaches. Instead of just talking about criminalization, let's talk about prevention and intervention, skills-based education, intervention for people who are just simply on the side of the street, as opposed to just having cops come every time or police officers come when there's an issue. And so I think in this moment, it takes, again, a little bit of massaging and really understanding what community actually means, because the Police Department and the sheriff and the district attorney and lawyers, they're all part of that community. They're not separate from it. But we need everybody at the table. And I also want to take a moment to lift up our local DeKalb NAACP led by Teresa Hardy, because I think that they're doing a tremendous job. But it's going to take all of us to be able to really have that conversation of what it looks like in the next 50 years, because that's really where we are.
And just to piggyback off of that, what do you say to those who ask, how do I get a seat at the table?
You just pull up a chair and sit down. We don't ask for permission. I tell my people, I used to tell my soldiers this, I said, "I would rather you ask for forgiveness than ask for permission," because your voice is just as important as everybody else's. Just because I have a title called President doesn't make me any more important than anybody else. So show up, speak out. Now, we also have an obligation in our hush, we also have an obligation as people to read. A lot of our people do not. My professor always, Riggins Earl, Dr. Riggins Earl, he always tells us this. He said, "Negroes don't like to read." And so I encourage us to read because the conversations that we're having now are not isolated, but they're very systematic in approach. And unless we take the burden of being able to train our minds, to build the very mental capacity to work through these issues, then just being at the table is not enough. Because we've seen, DeKalb County is majority black community when it comes to leadership. But we're having issues here, right? We look at Liberty County, which is also a predominantly African-American leadership. They're having issues there. And so it's not about enough, it's not enough to just simply say, "We want black faces at the table." How can we get informed, empowered, inspired minds to really work through these challenges?
Mr. President, I'm going to say amen right there, because as a Baptist preacher, I know when we say amen, it makes us move along a little faster. And so I'm going to come over to Commissioner Davis Johnson, who is going to talk a little bit about how folks can get involved.
Yeah, I would think that, and thank you all for your comments. I think that this is a very engaging and needed discussion here. And I think it's very important that we have to understand also as individuals that we need to vote. We need to select our public officials. We need to elect those that will represent our interests, that they represent our interests. We do know that there is an effort to support, to suppress our vote in Georgia. So we have to overcome that obstacle, just like we have overcome many obstacles in the past. And that means that whatever we have to do, we need to vote. We know when our NAACP president stated that we need to read, we have to be taught to read. And so education is fundamental. And so therefore, we need to participate in the census, because we need to be educated. And so we know that if you are not taught to read by age, by third grade, you may get lost. And so there is no reason by, is no reason for any child in America to not get an excellent education. And so we need to make sure that the census are filled out for all of our family members and everyone that is living in that household, because we also need medical care. We need to be able to have our children tested to see if their eyes are good or not, if they can see, if they need glasses, if they have heart problems, if they're having anything that would prevent them from learning. So we need to make sure that we go out and vote and that we fill out the census so that we can have the money to provide the needs that we have in our community.
Could I jump in really quick? I think, 30 seconds.
30 seconds. I think we should join organizations. If you are not an elected official, you should be in an organization that helps hold elected officials accountable. And that's our responsibility for us to have the tension. And so sometimes people don't like the tension, but the tension is what allows us to ensure that what this county and the government should look like actually looks that way. In respect to the defunding of the police, defunding is not taking all the money from police. It's a need for us to reallocate and look at how funds are spent. So I do encourage us to look at what percentage of our budget is used in policing that can be moved towards preventative measures and help our young people stay out of the criminal justice system. And then the last piece is, I would encourage people to look at Eight Can't Wait. There are eight things that have been touted that reduce police violence, as well as Campaign Zero. I would look at both of those to educate yourselves about what policing could look like differently. And consider a task force around use of force. We're doing that in Atlanta right now. Obviously, Atlanta's had some issues as of late, but that's something we can do proactively, is to have a task force on going through the use of force policy that we have here, and what does it mean, what does it look like, including the indemnification of officers at a rate that is just not equivalent around the state.
Thank you so much, Attorney Davis.
Give 15 seconds to Attorney Davis and just say that I agree with you about the organizations, that you need to hold elected officials accountable and join organizations, because I think it was your organization and the city of Atlanta, I mean, the city of Decatur, and hate-free Decatur, that moved the, that moved the movement to take down that Confederate monument at the courthouse. I don't know that it would have been done when it was done, because we can push it as public officials, but then if the state override us, you know, we need the community to come in and take steps like you all. So thank you for that.
Okay, panelists, as we continue, I do want you all to keep your responses as much as you can to a minute, because we're right here at 6:25, and we said we would end at 6:30. And so I do want to try to fit in as many more questions as we can. And so Chief, if I can go on, unless you just, five seconds, go ahead, Chief.
I just want to make sure that we put out there that the DeKalb County Police Department did look at the Eight Can't Wait, and we're doing very good as far as the Eight Can't Wait. And where we were lacking, we've already changed policy. So the one thing we were lacking out was the duty to intervene, and policy is as good as you make it. It's already in place, it's already being executed. So as the Eight Can't Wait, the DeKalb County Police Department is on point. So we understand there needs to be changes, we're ready to make changes, and we're not afraid. But defunding is not the answer.
Thank you, Chief. All right, and I do want to remind the panelists, after I ask these questions, we'll give you about a minute or so to make your closing comments. Very quickly, I have another question from Kelly Pollard, and Kelly Pollard asked the question, "In reference to police firings because of bad behavior in policing, are there policies being put in place or do they currently exist to disqualify post-certification to prevent officers from going to the next county over or jurisdiction over to be hired, rehired?"
Well, once they're fired or certain levels of discipline, post has to have that information. We are obligated to inform them, so they do have that information, and they generally send a letter confirming that they'll be looking at it and taking appropriate action. So that's already being done.
Thank you so much, Chief. I do want to ask another question that, again, comes from an anonymous individual that asks, "Are police officers trained to render aid before using use of force?"
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Are police officers trained to, whenever in a case of use of force, are they trained to render aid?
After the use of force?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes. Our job is to render aid. We're not just going to sit back and allow someone to need aid and just kind of stand by and watch. So yes, sir.
Thank you so much. The last question comes from Ron Mayo, and he asked, "To please explain which of the legislative measures, for Congressman Johnson, which of the legislative measures you described currently has bipartisan support and would make sense to..." Let's see. Okay, that would make sense, and that will most likely have a vote to pass.
Yeah, all of them make sense. None of them have bipartisan support at this time. The pressure is ratcheting up. Some Republicans may decide to vote for this legislation. Senator Tim Scott was asked to propose some legislation by Mitch McConnell, the Grim Reaper, who has said that the Democrats' George Floyd Justice in Policing Act is dead on arrival. But I believe the Tim Scott watered-down, weak Kool-Aid measure is not going to have enough support to pass the Senate either. So that's where this issue of voting comes in so important. That's why it's so important that people get out and vote, because you elect representatives who then enact legislation, and you also elect a president who will sign that legislation. So the right to vote is sacrosanct, and the responsibility of casting that vote is more important now than ever. So we may not get it done this week, we may not get it done next week, it's a long road, but we can get it done next year. And we, I haven't given up hope that we can get something done this year.
I would also like to, we mentioned legislative actions. We, as the Judge Georgia Coalition, put forth several demands around the Maude Arby case. That wasn't law enforcement, but still redresses, if you will, the level of brutality that we're continuing to see and why people are pissed off. And so, one, we asked for a, of course, we've all heard about the hate crime legislation, and that's currently being negotiated right now as we speak, two, the end of sentences arrest. And we don't want to, you know, take away the ability for there to be a shopkeeper's privilege, but outside of the shopkeeper's privilege, we don't think, or I know for a fact, I won't speak for, I know for a fact that it was written in 1863 as a racist way to keep slaves in check, or recently emancipated slaves in check. We want there to be a revision of the use of force here in the state of Georgia in way of repealing citizens, I mean, not citizens' arrests, but the stands of ground. We need there to be a, we talked about law enforcement investigations, we want there to be a statutory obligation for any law enforcement-involved shooting or use of force to be investigated, not by the institution, because currently, right now, it is not in code. We need that to be in the Georgia General Assembly. They need to do their part to ensure that that obligation is met. And so I can go down the list of the demands, but I just wanted to lift that up, because it's not just a federal issue, it's a state and local issue as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. We've come to the time where it's now 6:30, and so I want to offer to our viewing public, thank you all for submitting your questions. Unfortunately, of course, you all know that we were not able to get to all of the questions. However, you can still email your questions to district5@dekalbcountyga.gov. We will work diligently to get responses to your specific questions related to tonight's topic. And so I want to go ahead and give the panelists an opportunity. First of all, thank you all again for dedicating your time to talk with the public, respond to their questions. I definitely want to give a special shout-out to our chief. Thank you, because most of the questions dealt with the police particularly. And then thank all of you on the panel. And so I'm going to start to my left for closing comments, and we'll just go around the room, ending with Congressman Hank Johnson. So we'll begin with you, DA Sherri Boston.
Thank you so much, and it was an honor and a privilege to be with this esteemed panel. I'll just end by saying this, is that, you know, we could spend hours here and still not finish this conversation. What I can say on behalf of the office that I lead is that the DeKalb DA's office is committed to reimagining, to use those words, because I think that's the word that we need to use, how we do things. And for us, I've been a part of reimagining prosecution in the DA's office for almost four years, and we're not done. And we continue to look at how we can address the issues that face our communities, whether it's excessive force, whether it's domestic violence, whether it's human trafficking, whether it's diversion and rehabilitation and reentry, all of the issues that affect the community, not that I work in, but that I live in and I'm raising my children in. And so I look forward to continuing these efforts with all the partners here and the community, because only together can we, as Reverend Woodall put it, reimagine what's possible for life. So thank you.
Thank you so much, District Attorney. Chief?
I'd like to say that even though it isn't in code, the DeKalb County Police Department does have the GBI come out and handle any of our shootings, where there's contact made with the subject. If there is a crash where our officers are involved and there's serious injury, we call out GSP. So we are holding ourselves accountable. I'm not saying that we're perfect, but I'm saying that when there's something wrong and we can fix it, we do. I want people to hold us accountable. That's the only way that we can improve. We're here to do better and be better, and I'm always available. So if anybody has any feedback, they know all they have to do is reach out. So I do want to thank you, and I want to thank the community for providing these questions so that we can clarify and dispel any concerns that they may have.
Thank you so much, Chief. Director Lumpkin?
Let us be clear, in DeKalb, we have some of the finest officers that you will find. The, having said that, they are human. And we, as long as we hire from humans, we will, perfection will always be our goal, but humans do make mistakes. What we have to prevent is mistakes of the heart. We have, as the chief said, we have already integrated the Eight Can't Wait into DeKalb. That's a longstanding policy. I led the efforts of having GBI 20 years ago investigate all homicides, all shootings, all use of force where folks was injured. I brought crisis intervention to this state in 97, and had every officer trained in it. We trained in the, what we did was try to instill, by recruiting and training, in what we're doing in DeKalb, instill into our Police Department the basic of what policing ought to be in a democracy. In 1829, that was a tenet, although, as Mr. President said, in the Constitution, we were three-fifths of a human in order for the South to get some revenue. That's the reason we were counted as three-filth. But the police are, what it said was, "Police are the public, and the public are the police." I said, "Police are the people, and the people are the police." We have to have that. The standard is prevention. That's the efficiency of police, prevention of crime, while having an absolute impartial focus on the impartial enforcement of the law, treating everyone. Well, this community deserves that. This community is going to have, has a higher standard than Georgia, and it's going to be the model for the rest of this country.
Thank you so much, Attorney Davis.
Yes, I just want to encourage people, stay in the street until we get what we want, and whatever that is, the folks that are in this room will have to respond to the power of the people. As Malcolm X grassroots movement says, "Educate, agitate, and organize, and organize, and organize, and organize." And so that's what we'll continue to do until policing looks the way the people want it to look, because that is what the role we play. Everything that we pay our taxes for should look how we want it to look. And until that's done, continue to educate, agitate, and organize. That's our responsibility as citizens.
Thank you, sir. Sheriff Maddox?
Yes, let me just say the DeKalb County Sheriff's Office
Yes, let me just say the DeKalb County Sheriff's Office has some phenomenal men and women who pride themselves every day to get up and put that uniform on, to be able to go out and serve this community. And as I said before, I'm not just an advocate for the inmates, I'm an advocate for the officers that get up every day and wear that uniform in light of what's going on here today. And that's why part of the mission statement is, "We are part of the community, and we value their expectations, and we will always honor the rights and dignity of those that we serve because we operate in excellence, accountability, and respect." So again, I want the community to know that we are here, we hear them, we are here for them, and we hear them, and we will be here. And again, I look forward to continuing the work with Reverend, as well as the chief, the DA, attorney. I have attorneys going to come in and give us a few words in a couple of days, in reference to speaking to the officers and letting them know what the consequences for unjustified, unnecessary use of force. And Director Lumpkin, so thank you all, and again, thank you Commissioner and Congressman for pulling this together and bringing us together. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here with the sheriff. Mr. President?
So as I conclude, you know, I simply really just want to reflect over the voices of those people that are in the streets as we speak, even as it rains and storms outside. They are pressing us to take urgent action. And oftentimes, it makes us very uncomfortable. I know for me, it challenges my privileges that I share, you know, as an educated black man who comes from a family. Some people don't have that luxury, and when we walk outside, we literally walk over them. And I say "we" inclusively. And so what we are having to do, as I close, the reimagining process cannot just be resolved or reserved for, you know, the leaders. It also has to go back home to where we go and we spend majority of our time. And so from the church house to the prison, to the business, to the legislature, all of us are going to have to come together and really reimagine what's possible. And I say that, I continue to say it, because it's not cliche, but it's a general challenge. And it's going to take work. It's going to take some of us losing what we got comfortable with having. It's going to take some of us having to step back, to step down, to step up, to step out. But every single voice has to be brought to the table, every last one. And I don't believe we can get it done unless we have everybody there. And there's a quote that I'll end, that Brother Davis, you know, introduced me to, and I never forget, "I made a covenant." I said, "There are two things that I have as a leader that I must always abide by. One is to always protect thy people." Thy people being every single person in that community, not just people that look like me or think or love like me, but every single person. And then two is a quote by Milka Bra, it says, "Tell no lies and claim no easy victories." And so we must tell the truth, even when the truth sometimes becomes uncomfortable. But that truth will set us free. And then two, claim no easy victories, and that speaks for itself. So thank you so much for having this conversation. Thank you for all of the work that you all do here in the DeKalb County, and I look forward to standing with you on that wall.
Thank you, sir. We continue to stand with you. Congressman Hank Johnson?
Thank you. I'm heartened by the move on the streets by young people, black, white, Latino, Asian, straight, LGBT, doesn't matter. Everybody's out there, and they don't like the society that we're living in. We have built a violent society that everybody's looking at, and they don't like it. They want it changed. The police happen to have been the powder keg, but it's much deeper than that. We've been talking about systemic racism in this country that has now been accepted as a fact of life by all of those people out in the streets marching, and they're demanding change. They want us to move away from the violent society that we have built for them. They want, when they say "defund the police," they don't mean abolish the police, they mean repurpose the funding, some of the funding, so that it goes to prevent the need for law enforcement to show up at the scene. They're demanding things like drug treatment on demand. When someone is on drugs, they are a threat to the public safety as well as to themselves. And when society does not look at the drug use as a public health issue and looks at it as a criminal justice issue, then we're allocating our resources ineffectually. So we're talking about with repurposed money, money for drug treatment, money for housing, people living under bridges, living out on the streets with no place to go. How are they going to feed themselves? Where is our social safety net to teach education, job retraining? Where are those assets being put? They're being put in military hardware that is somehow making its way to our streets. It's making us all less safe. So young people are calling for a change, not just in the police culture, the culture of policing, but the culture of society. And we need to take a holistic look at where we're headed. We need to make some fundamental changes, and it starts with the individual. Each individual has to become peaceful within their own heart. And society needs to teach them how to do that, needs to offer them the resources that enable them to achieve that. And so I say to the young people, "Continue to do what you do." I say to my wife, Marita Davis Johnson, Commissioner, "Thank you for hosting this very important gathering. I'm honored to be here amongst the community activists, the law enforcement community that keeps us safe, the district attorney's office that makes sure that those who come before it get a fair break." I know that our DA does that. And lastly, our chief of staff, who's a man of many words, but he hasn't spoken very much here this evening, our CEO, Michael Thurman, "Thank you for all that you've done to bring this county to where it is today." Thank you. And with that, I'll yield again.
Well, Congressman, you must have known the CEO was going to close us out in comments by passing him. So Mr. CEO, if you want to leave us... Okay, well, we'll yield to the Commissioner before I...
This is, this is the CEO's building, so I'm going to let him close it out.
Yes, ma'am.
But, you know, I think that, I'd like to just thank everyone from the bottom of my heart for participating in this town hall tonight. And I want people to know that we put this together last week while my chief of staff went to Florida on vacation for three days. So he was working from the beach, and everyone confirmed when asked. So that means a lot. It says a lot about the people that are here. Some are not public elected officials, but everyone here are people that serve and that cares and that have contributed substantially to the dialogue that is happening here in America today. So, you know, my mother used to always tell me, growing up, "Just treat those like you would like to be treated." And that's what I try to do. You know, I don't carry a title on my shoulder, you know? I don't try to get accolades for who or what I may be. I just try to do for the least of thee and be the voice for the voiceless. And I always tell people that I'm always going to do what I feel is right, and it's up to you to put me out. And if you put me out of office, I'm still going to do what I feel that needs to be done. So I appreciate you all. I appreciate our CEO, because you're talking about somebody that speaks truth to power. That's our CEO. And so he has come at a time that we needed great leadership in DeKalb, and he was the person that was sent to us. I do believe that. I chair the Employee Relations Public Safety Committee. I have the extreme privilege to have such a fine director and police chief that I can go to and talk with, and we can bounce things around. And if I call on them, they're always there. If I have questions about what's happening, whether it be in the fire department, the police department, 911, what, just inclusive of public safety, he's there. So thank you again, and I yield back, as Hank says.
Thank you, Mr. CEO.
Thank you so much. And first, let me thank Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson. This is an amazing display of leadership to pull this together in short order at a critical moment in time. So thank you so much. You didn't do this for District Five, you did this for DeKalb. And by the way, when we host these town halls, folk, people are looking and listening from all over the world. You have to really understand that. And to that extent, I want to thank Ms. Diamond Lewis and John Matosk and the communications staff for pulling this together. It's an amazing event, and let me just share, we constantly get inquiries from other counties and cities around the country asking, "How do you all pull the technology and the expertise together to host these events?" Not everyone can do it. So thank you all for being here. We really do appreciate that. And finally, this, folks, remember now, I like to tell folk, "I'm the Charlie Wilson of Democratic politics in Georgia." I've been around a long time. So I tell the young folks, y'all can call me Uncle Mike. I'm Charlie Wilson. But let me tell you, and the congressman said, "Well, he usually talks." But sometimes, those of us who are called on to talk need to just sit and listen. So tonight, I decided I won't just sit and listen, so I could learn from some of the most brilliant leaders we have in the state right now. But I'll leave you with this. Think about a recent event, and it was alluded to about the removal of the lost cause monument from Decatur Square. And that was a leadership lesson. And what it taught me is, and what I hope people who are listening and watching will know, that everyone has a role to play. Right? There were people who marched, but there were county commissioners who passed ordinances. There were mayors and city councilmen who raised concerns and passed resolutions. There was a judge who signed an order that determined it was a nuisance. There were journalists with Decaturish who wrote opinion pieces. There were folk who marched. There were, there was an ecumenical group of pastors of all races, colors, and creed who unified themselves and said, "Not in my city, not in my county." There were police officers who were on duty, who, to ensure that no one was injured in this process, and there was no violence, that we protected the protesters as well as we protected the peace. Collectively, we all came together, we got it done. There was a gentleman named Mike who went out and hired the crane operator, who works in facilities, who was able to get it done in short order. Something we were supposed to do on Wednesday, but Attorney Davis decided to call a demonstration on Wednesday that made it happen on Thursday. But it took everybody, Madam DA, coming together to fundamentally change 108 years of history. And one English poet said, "That those also serve will only stand and wait and pray." There were other people praying that none of us know, that this day would come. We all have a role to play, turn to and not off from, and we'll continue to make progress. Thank you all, and God bless you.
Thank you so much, Mr. CEO. And again, thank you to our panelists. Want to remind the viewing public, as we close out tonight's discussion, you've been watching A Candid Conversation sponsored by Commissioner Marita Davis Johnson, District Five, on police and community relations. We want to, certainly on behalf of Commissioner Davis Johnson, thank the District Five staff, Demetrius Pinkett, Sarah Lee, and Maxwell, thank you all so much for your commitment as well. Maxwell Callaway and Sarah Lee Bale, thank you all so much for your commitment to helping us make this happen. There are two quotes that we will close with tonight, and one is by Adriana Sawyer, which says, "Whether it's forced or invited, change is inevitable." And the second quote is from my dear fraternity brother, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who said, "The time is always right to do what is right." And so as we move forward and the thought and the discussion of what we are doing, we've been asked, will there be another candid conversation? And I say to the public, not to the panelists, but as long as the panelists will agree, we will host another candid conversation. And so again, thank you so much for viewing tonight's discussion on A Candid Conversation on Police and Community Relations in DeKalb County. Good night, and God bless you all.
Thank you.